Good evening, everyone. The time being after seven o'clock on the clock. I'm going to open tonight's school committee meeting for January the 10th, 2019. First order of business on the agenda is minutes from our December 13 meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
A second?
Any discussion? Okay, hearing, no discussion. All in favor of approving the minutes? December 13, 2018? Thank you. Motion passes 5-0. Second order of business, chairperson's report. Missing the December 13 meeting with illness, I feel like I've been out of the loop for a while, but I wanted to circle back to a hot-button topic that continues to be a hot-button topic, and that's the Fund Our Future campaign. Recently, I had the opportunity to work with my union in Lexington, and we are really looking at engaging in the process of school funding and the Foundation Budget Review Commission from a grassroots level, trying to motivate the teachers to engage the parents and the community, and I just, I can't talk about this enough. The numbers that are coming out are staggering as far as how much money the local cities and towns are losing out of in education funding every year, and how much the cities and towns are putting out of our own pockets to provide a world-class education for the students of Massachusetts. So, I had an opportunity the night of, we opened up the, I was on television. The telethon, thank you. Sorry, it's been a long week. Tomorrow's Saturday, by any chance? The night that we opened up the telethon, I had an opportunity to visit with Kate Hogan for an extended period of time, and she's going to be attending our meeting in two weeks on the 24th, and we're going to be having similar conversations to the ones that we had with Senator Eldridge in December. But I did put a bug in her ear about just how much the town of Maynard is really hurting when it comes to education funding, and all of the positive things that we're doing in spite of being underfunded, but more importantly, all of the amazing things that we would like to do if the Commonwealth of Massachusetts could come through and support all of the cities and towns in the way that they deserve to be supported. So, I hope that the people in the audience and the people who might watch this on WAVM on delay will please come out on the 24th and make their voices heard, because we're going to have some face time with our representative, and that's a really important thing, and I think we need to really continue to push the conversation and be the squeaky wheel so that we can advocate for the town of Maynard and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts when it comes to fixing education funding in general. Shifting gears a little bit, on social media, Mary, recently I saw a celebration of some MEF grants that were awarded.
Oh, yeah. Amazing year.
Yeah, I just want to compliment you. I know that you're one of the leaders of the MEF, but more importantly, I just want to say thank you to MEF and the town of Maynard that supports MEF year after year for supporting our students, supporting our teachers, and really providing some funding for some really fun, you know, really innovative and really educational opportunities for the teachers and students in Maynard, so.
I'll take this opportunity to do a shout-out for the annual taste, which is Sunday, March 3rd.
Absolutely.
It's always the first Sunday in March, but that's our largest fundraiser.
It's coming up already.
I feel like we're just.
I know. And the restaurants that are coming forward are pretty cool, so every year it seems like we get, you know, more and more restaurants wanting to participate.
March 3rd.
March 3rd. We'll be right down, 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Elks.
Awesome. Thank you for chiming in on that. I really appreciate it, Mary. And then finally, just keeping in the interest of open and honest communication, at the last meeting in December, I know Dawn chaired the meeting, and she took a few minutes during her chairperson's report to just refer the members of the community to our revised and updated public meeting guidelines, and really the work that Dawn spearheaded to really bring it back into alignment with our school committee policies, with public meeting law, and all of the advice and recommendations that we've gotten from the Mass Association of School Committees, our legal counsel, and others. So, Dawn, thank you again for that. For people who are in the audience and you haven't seen it yet, it's more streamlined, it's clearer, and I think it looks really good. Dawn, thank you publicly for doing that. And that's about all I have for my chairperson's report. So, Dr. Girardi, what do you have for your superintendent?
So, I'd like to start our email off, as I have been this year, with very positive emails that I received last time we met. The first email is from a parent, a email from a parent, to highlight one of our amazing teachers at Maynard High School, Paul Tovar. And to add context, Paul had sent emails to a student just before the holiday, and this parent was very impressed. This is what the parent wrote. "Hi, Mr. Karaginos. I hope this message finds you well and enjoying the holiday great. I just finished reading 'How Children Succeed: Great Curiosity and the Hidden Power of Character' by Paul Tovar." I'm not sure I can pronounce his last name. "That would be a great book for all teachers and/or even for a school committee book review." I thought of this email that Mrs. Tovar had just sent, and I felt compelled to email it. It is a breath of fresh air to see a teacher who knows the true sense of the word, pushing his students to think, reason, problem solve. She is teaching while showing that these traits of overcoming adversity and persisting in the face of challenge isn't just a skill for history, but for life. Of course, I'm not in her classroom, however, if this message is reflective of her teacher approach, she does all of this while seeming to be adaptive and completely supportive of all students' needs, while still pushing them to be resourceful and fully accountable. She appears to be driven to give trades degree, ingreades, and choice grades, what more could you ask for? She is a gift to Maynard High School, and a very student who is fortunate enough to walk into her classroom. I hope she receives the appreciation and recognition she very much deserves, in all regards, in this manner. And both Chuck and I responded to that, of course, and we also shared, or actually shared that, and shared that, that's weekly, to acknowledge her wonderful abilities. I also commented to him, on the holiday during that weekend, she actually emailed her colleagues to be sure that something that would do, that person about that was organized and given, that's how passionate she is about her job. She emailed on the holiday, which impressed me, and I was doing a clockwork anyway, and I got this email, so it was two days to say, but I wanted to share this. The second email was from our assistant superintendent to the principal's family. She wrote, "Hi, David Martin. Thank you for inviting me to your backseat meeting today. I love seeing the celebration of our backseat for things like perfect attendance and honors for senior staff members. Seeing the tears in their eyes as they walked back to their seats was moving. It was good to see those positive emotions. I really appreciated the speed dating, the speed dating-like activity where faculty discussed best instructional strategies that they have used or seen used this year. This was a great way to focus a faculty meeting on teaching and learning. Thank you both for your leadership. I am so glad both of you are part of our team. Best, Jennifer."
And it's just nice, I think, for you to hear, you know, these positive things are happening in our faculty meetings, and the cultural changes that we were hoping for at Fowler, the positive spirit that we were hoping for is really happening, so I think that's pretty exciting to hear from an observer who's here in the building and sees it. Lastly, I'd also like to update the school committee on the air quality concerns at Green Meadow. I provide you with a hard copy document that was prepared by the MTA representative and one of our AP, our MEA representatives brought it to me on the day before vacation. It was a hard copy, and it's a very thick document, so I didn't, we didn't prepare documents for people to see, but we already have it up on the website so that people can review it. Colleen made sure to do that, just like she did with the other reports regarding the air quality concerns. And a quick summary for you of the results was that these tests really provide similar data to the testing that we had already conducted. However, they did take it a step further, and so there is no toxic mold. Let me say that. That's great. However, they did do a survey of the staff, a health survey about concerns, and the survey identified that the most workplaces, about 10% of the people have respiratory concerns. At Green Meadow, it's much higher, it's about 30%. And so, there were some great strategies in there as to how to improve that, and our facilities director and assistant facilities director have already reviewed this document. They met with me, and we have since emailed the union leadership to say we'd like to meet with them, and we're going to discuss an improvement plan based on this more recent information. So, I thank the MEA and the MTA for actually doing this, and I think it's going to help us improve the concerns over there, so I'm excited about that, and I wanted to share that with you tonight and with the audience so that they can look online and see that, you know, at least the worst-case scenario's not there. There's still concerns, we're going to work on improving it, but the worst-case scenario is not there, and that's the third assessment of that building, so. So, I was very excited about that. I wanted to share that with you tonight, and that is my superintendent's report for tonight.
Bob, just tying into that, did you get any clarification from Aaron, and maybe you mentioned this at the last meeting, on our application to the state?
Yes, as a matter of fact, so the MSBA, actually, we did not make the round of funding, but they do a follow-up call, and they explained to me that, A, our application was extremely well-written by Tim and Aaron, so kudos to them. They explained to me that there's a limited amount of resources, and so they can only fund so many projects a year, but they felt that we should consider, that we were very close, and that it would make total sense for us to reapply, and if we had any additional information, that we could share that. This is additional information that we could share with them.
Okay.
So, I know that Aaron, Tim, and I are in the process of resubmitting an SOI to the MSBA. I know we're full of acronyms here in Massachusetts in education, but basically, that is for the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, to consider whether we should build a new building. And so, they were very positive about the grant that we had broke, very, you know, they said we did a great job, and they said, you know, please consider reapplying, because we do want to serve all our communities, and if you have a need, we want to fill it.
Excellent. And I have down that the deadline is April 12th?
Correct.
So, yeah, okay.
For the SOI.
For the SOI.
And Bob, and Dawn, and I met with custodial union today to open negotiations, and Tim was there, and that was one of the things that we did touch on, was that they are already anticipating submitting as early and quickly as possible, and that based on the feedback that they had received from the state, that there was basically nothing that they needed to revise as far as the application was concerned, but as Dr. Girardi was saying, that we now have additional information that we can submit along with it. So, what I heard was it was a funding issue. It wasn't necessarily, it wasn't due to a lack of need. So, I'm optimistic that maybe this next go-around, we'll get to the top of the heap.
That's good.
Dr. Girardi, thank you. Any other follow-up questions for Dr. Girardi? Awesome. Student representative report. Pat, AJ, good evening, gentlemen. The mic's all the way across the room.
So, hello, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
So, starting off with a few things, basketball is mostly on everyone's mind for sports right now. I was at the game on Tuesday for the girls, and the girls did a really good job against, I believe it was Narragansett. The boys, unfortunately, I heard that they lost away in Narragansett. So, one for one trade on that.
Yeah. Sorry. I'm kind of sick, just a little bit. Wow. So, Mr. Cruz had sent out an email to the student body before break regarding elective improvement, and we basically, as a student body, we chose electives that interested us just for statistics going forward. So, in first place was art. I'll be sending these, these statistics to you after the meeting, but art was first, with 73 responses totaling 38.8% of student body, and second was music, with 61 responses, 32.4%. And in third place was theater, with 53 responses, 28.2%. There's a bunch of others up there. Also was social studies, science, business, and languages. And again, I'll send this to you after the meeting. He sent out a reminder email, because this was out of 183 responses, so that's roughly 50% of the student population, so he sent out a reminder email, so if you wanted updated results, you can email him, but I will certainly email what we have right now to you after the meeting.
So, was that, was that, he sent it to the whole student body, so that's ninth through 12?
Yes.
Okay.
I will say that on Monday, so midterms start this upcoming Tuesday. We have our first two midterms that day. That Monday, though, the student government has, is having what they're calling a StuCo, I'm pretty sure it's called. So, it's basically short for study and hot cocoa.
Stu, no, sorry. StuCo stands for student council.
That makes sense.
Yours would be much more.
Perhaps student council is sponsoring?
Yes, that's what happened.
Yeah, they're sponsoring the thing, sorry, I thought it stood for study.
No, no.
I like that, I think it'd be cool.
Well, everything's short.
Yeah.
It stands to reason, AJ.
So, basically, what it is, is the student body that night from like 5 to 8, a bunch of kids are getting together to basically relax and study for their midterms that are following that week. Is there any sales going on, or is this just?
No, so, student government will be covering hot cocoa fees and snacks and stuff, so they'll be in the caf in the library of the high school, so the caf will be like the eating place where people can like talk, and then if you need a quieter studying time, you can head to the library and pursue your books. I think it's a really good idea.
It's a great idea.
Great community building.
Yeah, no, it's a really good idea. Very good idea.
Awesome.
We used to, did you ever have this in anyone who went to college, like studying, you'd have like midnight, you could go down like when they're in the middle of midterms, and get waffles at the cafeteria.
Cafeteria being open all night.
Yeah, it was definitely like good mode, or just keep studying, and then get a waffle, and crash in the car. Anyways, sorry, I digress.
That's fine.
So, what time is that, the study?
That'll be 5 to 8 on Monday.
That's awesome.
So, I probably mentioned this last meeting, or maybe the meeting before, I don't remember, but it was the senior districts where anyone interested in music can audition for a regional, like, competition. We probably had 10 people get in, somewhere around there, and so the, I don't know how to describe it, their rehearsals and the concert are up this upcoming week, so the students will be heading to, I don't remember what high school, but some high school, from 3 to 9 Wednesday and Friday, and then they will have their concert on Saturday for families and close friends. Yes.
I also mentioned that Pops Night is actually coming up. It's coming up this February 1st, starting at 6?
Maybe, sure. I don't remember.
It's sometime around 6 or 7. I personally was there helping tech it last year, and it was actually pretty fun to watch at the same time, so I highly recommend if any of you can come out. I believe the auditions for it were there due tomorrow, so we find out the X. But yeah, and then Solo Ensemble Night, which I know Pat sent.
Yeah, I don't know, there's no date for that set yet, but Solo Ensemble Night will be actual ensembles, and then Pops Night is kind of like popular songs. It's, they're kind of similar, but Solo Ensemble Night is more instrumental, and Pops Night is more vocalist.
And I think that wraps it up. But I'll sign, any questions?
Great. That's awesome.
Thank you, guys.
I do have one more thing, prayer request, the, your relocation to the high school. I typed this up, and I did send it to everyone, our executive staff at WAVM, so I don't know if they changed anything, but this represents the WAVM perspective of moving your school committee, your school committee meeting location to the high school.
Awesome. Excellent. Excellent.
Awesome.
That's great.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, Pat.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's really okay. No worries. Yep.
Good luck with midterms.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know.
Awesome. I'll take a look at that later. I really appreciate the time and hours.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Dr. Gabron, I don't know why you sat down. It's your turn. Wellness Committee, good evening, everyone.
Thank you. I'm delighted to be here tonight with members of, many members of the Wellness Committee, under the leadership of, very capable leadership of Mary Ferrante, and some dynamic members of our Wellness Committee, and our support from our superintendent. We have revitalized our Wellness Committee, and we're here tonight to talk about four goals that we have for 2018 to 2020. We can't accomplish everything this year, so our goals are over the two-year period.
Don't keep the people at home in suspense. Pull your papers off the ground after there.
Here we are. Great, thank you. Okay, so tonight, we're going to do just a few things. We're going to talk about the Massachusetts Wellness Regulations, let you know who the members are, and we have four people who are going to present each of our four goals. The first is our social-emotional goal, second, our physical activity goal, third, our school safety goal, and the last one is our sound nutrition practices goal. So, we can start right away with some Wellness Committee regulations by the state. Mary Ferrante, as I said, has done a wonderful job about keeping us in tune with what we are supposed to be doing according to regulations. The Wellness Committee must be a group of individuals representative of the district. We have, must be a standing committee. We need to meet at least four times a year, and which we're going to do quite a bit more than that, because we've already, I think, met three, and we make recommendations concerning school health, wellness policies, programs, and practices. We have a few members of our committee, we actually are growing. I'll tell you about that in a minute. First, I'd mention the capable leadership of Mary Ferrante, our high school's school nurse, who's a chair, Mary Bramley, our very capable, main school committee person, who's a great asset, Dan Costello, the principal of Fowler School, also serves in the role of a parent, Valerie Karns and Patricia De Mars, who are high school teachers on it, Rebecca Lynch, who is our newest member from the Asmat Valley Boys and Girls Club, Trista Manchusco, who is our school resource officer, who has been a great resource to us, Michelle Resendez, our business manager, who many of you may not know, has a degree in culinary arts, so she's interested not only in nutrition, she's also interested from the business standpoint, Tony Anthony Savard, our Maynard High School custodian, who is incredible, Heather Chastney, our food school service director, Brenda Sullivan from Fowler School, and Emmeline Weeks, who is a student in Maynard High School. We are doing, we have been meeting at 7:00 a.m. in the morning, and we have decided to make it a little bit more open. We're going to have every other meeting after school at 3:30, so if you notice, we do not have a large representation from Green Meadow, because 7:00 a.m. is a little bit early for the people. See what we can do there. Alrighty. Our first goal is, I think Dan Costello is going to present our first goal.
Thank you. The social-emotional goal really is to promote wellness, safety, and good health across the district. Can read the goal there. And I just want to give you a quick update on the work that we've done thus far this year. Both Green Meadow and Fowler are implementing PBIS, which is Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. We're both, I think, in the midst of the implementation. We have a team here that's been very active in attending training, as well as the Green Meadow team, and we're going to be working on the next early release date with our whole staff at Fowler on implementing PBIS, and we've begun the work of revising our student handbooks, including the work that the team has done. We're also constructing a list of community health resources that is in progress. We're trying to bring some to the team, and Charles is kind of taking the lead on that, because we want to make sure that that's a resource for the entire community. And we really haven't begun this work, but we feel it's really important for us to kind of assess the guidance, counseling services at the three schools, to get a sense of what's needed, and to get a sense of what's really working well, and where we can do a better job. We're trying to look at it from a district perspective, everything from staffing to resources, and so we want to try to, at some point, I don't think we even have a timetable at this point, try to present to the school committee and the central office about what makes sense, and what we recommend these stuff.
I just want to make a quick comment from the third bullet. If you haven't seen Dr. Girardi's goals for this year, and sometimes it's a rolling goal, and it's incremental progress, you'll see that the school committee certainly supports, not that we don't support everything you just said, spoke about, but certainly number three, we made that one of his goals through the year, which is obviously not just him, but everyone. So, we certainly, I know, it's easy to, this is an easy one to sort of speak for everyone and say we recognize the importance of that.
Great. I think the Wellness Committee has a really great balance between student representation, which I think has been really helpful for us this year, and some of that will steer the way.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Do we have a virus?
Brenda Sullivan is going to be next after we close the door.
That would be funny.
Physical activity, so our physical activity this goal this year is work with the Mass Department of Transportation, Safe Routes to School. It does increase the opportunity for our students to actually get some physical activity and walk into school in the morning. We're doing it as a group. We're trying to get as many kids as we can to do that. It's going to take place on February 6th. We've had a subcommittee, and we met with people from the Safe Routes to School, and we talked about what they have, how we can promote it, how do we do this in a safe manner so that all kids are safe. Students and faculty have been asked to join, and so we've just recently have, we've been on the fence on where to start, should we do Mill and Main, is that going to be accessible? Charles actually did a little route today, and we're thinking that the Boys and Girls Club would be the better place to do it, and then we can come through the school driveways that's safer than 117. So, that was a first opportunity. The next thing that we want to do is, we want to encourage K through 8 parents to complete the Safe Route to Schools survey. It's a parent travel survey that was provided by that group from the Mass DOT. And then, we're going to schedule pedestrian safety presentation, is they're going to go down and meet with our fourth graders to talk to them about how to be safe, how to cross the street, make sure you're looking for crossing guys, and all the other things that they need to do to be safe to walk to school.
Can I just add to that? The school community member, Bethany Hoolhand, and some parents actually introduced us to the people at Safe Routes to School, and they suggested that we connect Charles and the Wellness Committee to them, and that's, I was just so happy that, you know, sometimes we find resources, whether it's parents working with school community members, and that you found those resources valuable. I mean, I just want to thank you very much.
There are many other resources, and I have to make them aware of, that we'll manage them, and some funding and different things, so.
It is, it is kind, it's really, once you see some of it, like feeling for some of what they offer, and a lot of it's free, it's really, I don't want to take advantage of this every day, and it's great that that's aligning.
And this is the fourth annual year, right? So, where, so they've worked out the tweaks, they've really, so, yeah, so they had a lot of good advice, so.
So, Mary Bramley has something to do with our head score.
I can sit here and do it, instead of tripping as I go around. So, the one that's, I took this one because it's near and dear to me right now. Promoting student wellness initiatives related to social media, vaping, drugs and alcohol abuse in conjunction with the Maynard School Safety Committee. So, our action items are, thank you, first one, to formulate a list of all the programs pre-K through 12 that have recently taken place, as well as a list of projected presentations and curriculum initiatives, and it's amazing how many things we're actually doing, so we'll be putting together that list. But just to give you a couple of examples, Project Here is an initiative sponsored by Massachusetts Attorney General's Office, funded by General Electric Foundation and the Heron Project. We're able to utilize free of charge, again, a number of exciting and motivating materials focused on substance abuse prevention at the middle school level, in addition to providing integrated classroom materials. So, that's, that's one example of something that's already going on in the school. And then the next one that I'll give you for an example, dealing with social media. Faculty at Fowler is fortunate that Dr. Richard DiCaprio, who is also a Maynard parent and associate dean of students at B.C. at Boston College, has volunteered to work with staff members on issues regarding the use of social media. So, that just gives you a couple of examples of the first one. And then additionally, reviewing feedback from students, faculty, and parents regarding the effectiveness of the 2019 presentations and initiatives, and then prioritizing wellness and safety initiatives for 2019 to 2020 at the Joint Wellness Safety Committee meeting in May. We have a lot on our plate. It's just an amazing, amazing. We have a lot on our plate. It's just, it's just an amazing, amazing group, but anyway, so that's that.
It's so important, though.
It is.
And Michelle Resendez.
So I'm going to talk about the Sound Nutritional Practices goal. I, I'm near and dear to this, because Charles just mentioned, I also have a degree in culinary arts. And when I was younger originally, I was going to go and teach culinary arts to students. So that was what I thought I wanted to do. But, so we're talking about promoting practices designed to foster an environment meaningful with schools that promotes lifelong sound nutritional practices. So we have the benefit right now of Heather Shastany, who is our food service director, is also a dietitian. She's a dietitian, so we have that added knowledge base. Establish one of our action items. Establish school gardens where students will experience this planting, harvesting, and tasting nutritious foods. Now, this is something we actually started last year, and we're pretty successful. I think at one point, we were serving some of the stuff we got from our garden in the high school cafeteria. So we're, we're going to continue that. Rochelle Warner up at the high school and Heather are working on this project with the students. The next one is make recommendations regarding the Maynard High School fundraising form and arrange training for student advisors to ensure compliance with regulations. Now, this action plan actually came out of our food service review, that the administrative review that this date comes down and does of us, because there are certain requirements when you can compete with school lunch, as well as like nutritional guidelines that we often abide by, whether it's in our cafeteria or not. So fundraising falls into that, so the bake sales and the candy sales and those kind of things. So we're making that objective to be nutritious, we have to kind of do it across the board. The other is support the efforts of two Framingham State University dietitian interns who will be providing nutritional classes for, nutrition education classes for K through 12. So that's, again, another advantage on how they're having a strong connection with John Stockman Institute and Framingham State. We are able to get some interns that are going to come in, and they're going to teach some nutritional classes, as well as, you know, do some things within the cafeteria. And we're fully in support of that. And then also include discussion with food service director, as well as committee meetings to promote continuation of qualities of the service program. And again, she is a dietitian. We do a food service company that's really invested in student nutrition and making healthy choices. But making the choices, having the students make their own choices type of thing. One of the other things that we talked about that's like not on here, but we have talked about it, is setting up a hydroponic garden, possibly in Green Meadow. I know we had a smaller one last year, but that's another goal, is to maybe do something like that again in conjunction with maybe science teachers or some students in order to maintain, and then maybe create some sort of meal to serve in the cafeteria as well. So also at Fowler, not just at the high school.
Well, as you've noticed, we're a little ambitious on our goals. That is why we're saying 2018 to 2020. What our next step is, we would like to come back in the spring to just report briefly to the school committee on what we, where we've succeeded and where we're going. We want to, one of the things we want to do, we want to assess how well we're doing in this very important area. So we hope well. We're very interested in any questions you may have, and we will be working and we'll be seeing you for another report towards the end of the school year.
Charles, in any of your discussions, because it's sort of, you're hitting a broad range of topics, have you folks talked about food insecurity at all and hunger? Does that come up in the wellness, or is that something, am I in the wrong part?
No, we haven't. It's, we didn't choose that as a goal, but.
No, no, I'm just curious if it's, I know there's a. That's, I was just curious if it fell into anything. But yeah, no, I'm not looking to add to the goals. Just curious.
Other questions or comments?
I guess one thing, first of all, it just, it's really, it's great to see, first, the obvious engagement and like investment of this committee. And second, just the very clear, this presentation is so clear. I have a very good sense of what you're doing and what you want to accomplish. And I love that you're being ambitious too, at the same time. So those are, that's all great. And another thing that occurs to me is, I imagine with so many things that will be at all three schools, finding ways to be able to optimize having, as you've already mentioned, green medal participation and representation will be very helpful. Or at least, I'm sure you have ways that you try to back channel, get their, get their feedback, if not indirectly, in those meetings. And then I guess the other thing was that I've heard some things from different parents, and I haven't experienced it myself, because we don't, we don't use the food service a lot. My kids can buy ones a week.
Same here. Same here.
But that, so that parents, parents are having a hard time with figuring out the choices their kids are making, and that there's choices there every day, like that they might be getting like ice cream every single day, and that's happening. So I don't know, and I'm just put it, I just want to mention that these are just things I've heard, and I don't know the actual truth of any of it.
I tell you, so methling.
And thank you. And so things like that, just, I'm wondering if that was on your radar to consider, and thank you. I saw a smile, so I figured it was probably.
Just a brief follow-up, because I'm one of those parents too, so he's allowed to buy once a week if all is going well at home. And when you use the app, you can look at the history. It's like browser history. And I found that although he was eating once in a while, once a week at school, he was getting ice cream every day.
Oh, interesting.
Anyway, so it was great, because I, if you, so anyone that asks you, tell them to look into the app. Use the app. You can totally see what they're buying.
But does the app mean that, like if I give him money?
Oh, I don't know about money. I just deal in like, it tells you.
Oh, okay. So eat, so it doesn't have to be on the card? Okay.
Yeah. So I quickly discovered we had an ice cream problem. I'm just throwing that out there and, you know, in transparent collaboration.
So it's great to have Heather, our food service person, on the committee, because every meeting, it seems like these things are coming up, and she's great about really trying to address them. But one of the things that was brought to my attention, because Dr. Girardi was nice enough to bring me through the Fowler cafeteria at one point for the same reason, you know, where is everything located, you know, in that? And I guess you can actually have your kids opt out of certain items, which I don't think we have out there, so that if you don't really want your kid to have ice cream.
I don't want to be too bad.
I know, but you can. Just saying.
I'd prefer to have someone else to blame.
Everything actually that they're allowed in the cafeteria, although it is ice cream, it all needs nutritional.
Right. That's what Heather said, yeah.
So they're all, they're called A, I don't know, group A snacks and whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
As long as they fall within the nutritional guidelines.
Because otherwise, we don't get reimbursed. We don't get the support.
Can you say this right now? In the beginning of the year, I feel like it was like.
It's a big issue.
It probably is. It probably is.
As cold. So maybe they're, it's a cold thing.
Well, and I also heard that they were eating it first, so that it wouldn't melt, and then they were too full to eat the rest of their food, so.
One follow-up question. Dr. Gabron, you mentioned that your committee's constantly growing. But if any members of the community reach out and show interest, especially parents?
We have. We have two parents right now that are interested.
Okay.
And that's why I mentioned the adjustment in time historically. The committee is about 7:00 a.m., which is a nice time for people in high school, but very good help. Some of us like to sleep a little bit more. We're going, every other meeting's going to be after school. One evening, morning, one evening.
Is there any anticipation that at some point you will cap the number of people that participate on the committee, or?
We'll have to see. Just because people are on the committee doesn't mean that they'll cap it every committee.
Okay. Just anticipating some possible follow-up questions.
That would be, that'd be next follow-up question.
Knowing that the Wellness Committee is mandated, I know that oftentimes, like a PAC or some of the other legally mandated committees do have certain expectations for number of parents or community representatives, et cetera. But it feels like perhaps the Wellness Committee's obligations are a little looser when it comes to the makeup of the committee, or?
There's, there's certain requirements to be able to, kind of, take that they're not here. Food service administration, we didn't have the sharing of information, so now we have to. So there's certain requirements, there's also many people that have to have, but at the end, at least have someone who knows that.
Got it. Yeah, because I know some of these are double-dipping, clearly. Like Trista's a parent, Dan's a parent, yes.
This committee's been working on the essence of the most good things ever.
It's super encouraging to see the interest.
Yeah, she has. She's doing a really good job.
She's done an incredible job here. Dr. Girardi said, "It's really good to see this." Actually, it's been funny, though, so.
Any other questions or follow-up?
No, thank you all very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, one more thing. I did notice you had walk-in role, and I love that you have that inclusive language, just coming from the world of people with disabilities.
Yeah.
Walk-in role. That's the walk-in role.
Right, and that is a, that's a piece of, is determining, we brought that up. Determining how, how students.
With the CPAC, I think you mentioned that we don't want any student excluded. So in some cases, for students with physical disabilities, we can see we want to drop them off and take, even if it's just a little bit, they want to participate, we'll find a way so that it's exclusive.
That's great.
And I just like that. I do, I really enjoy seeing the energy and excitement of the Wellness Committee.
It's a good group.
And kudos to our staff, and our school committee, participating.
I like it enough. And I also like the fact that these are short meetings, because everybody has to be at classes by.
That's what it'd be if it was the early meeting.
All right. Item number six, an update on the alumni field bleacher replacement project and the ongoing efforts to gain CPC support. Mary, just before you launch into your update, thank you for the time, the effort, and the energy that you're putting into this.
And with Erin too, and Michelle, we were at a meeting today with Michelle, and so this is, yeah.
Having been through the CPC process for the Fowler fields, I understand what a monumental effort it is. So thank you to everyone involved. So what do you have to fill us in on?
So we did, we filed the initial application, and then the CPC, Community Preservation, people sent back saying you've, you know, met the first level, and now do a more comprehensive application, which we did, thanks, thanks to Erin. He worked with me to create that. And then we just were requested to meet with them on January 23rd, with some specific questions that Erin, again, is, is going to be nice enough to go with me on.
Is that at 7:00?
It is at 7:00. Yeah, I'm not sure exactly when we're on, but meeting itself. So the pieces that they, that I wanted to bring to the school committee were the DPW support and school committee support in writing. So Erin's going to write something up from the DPW in support. And so I wanted to ask us to, to hopefully put a letter of support in writing also. And then the second part of that is the school committee willing to commit funds to support a project with, which primarily benefits the scholastic athletes. Which, by the way, the application resoundingly talked about everything, all of the other needs in town, that it also, you know, really, for life, that I just, I had quite a number of them. The Boys and Girls Club, different, you know, so it's like an all-town. It's not just for the schools. But, but anyway, so we can reiterate, we can reiterate that it's a town-wide thing. But they are asking if we are interested in, or willing to commit any funds. And then the other piece is, if the CPC does not fully fund this proposal as requested in the application, what is the proponents' funding plan? So we talked about capital plan and that kind of thing, too, of hopefully getting money that way. And Dr. Girardi was great, because one of the pieces was reaching out to the other towns and asking how they've dealt with this. So we've got some, some good feedback, and it, it comes down to being funded through the town budget or the CPC and/or fundraising is pretty much the, what the three, three areas are, which makes perfect sense. But it's good that we've got, you know, a good number of towns that, that responded, that I can, you know, refer to them to. So I guess the, the two questions are, can we get a letter of support in writing? If we can take a vote, and that we're in support of the, and the bleacher, the cost, as it's been spelled out, is $375,000. Incorporated in that is a 20% contingency, which is pretty standard, I guess. So it may come in a little bit less than that, but at this point, it's 375.
So maybe the motion could be that the school committee supports Mary and I writing a letter of support on behalf of the school committee for this project, and we can do that.
Perfect. Offline. Yep.
If somebody would like to motion that and approve it.
So I move to authorize Dr. Girardi and Mary Branley to write a letter of support for the bleacher project, as described.
Motion's been made, and I will second. So motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion or questions?
Questions? I think I just, my only thing, and I say this every time, is I would just avoid putting a dollar amount, because we're, we're already in the hole. I've attended multiple CPC meetings where they don't ask other applicants to do the same. And I'm respectfully not reporting that to the state. But I just, you know, like, we will if we can, but there's no money left, you know? So I guess I say this every time, and I'm not trying to be argumentative with them, but, you know, we're all, as taxpayers, putting money aside for projects, and this is a, they don't spend all of the money every year. So I would like to see this project funded. I'm sure there's other projects as a resident I support. So my plea is that we just don't commit any funds, but we say that we will certainly look at it as the budget progresses.
Well, and I'll add that, Dawn, that Mary mentioned the survey. It does talk about other districts that totally consider this out of capital projects funding.
Right.
So there are other funds within our one pot of money that could be used for this, and we have examples of other towns doing it that way.
Right.
And, but we are in total support of it, I think. And I'd like to think, you know, it's up to you, actually. I don't want to support it.
And again, I mean, the fact that it really does benefit the entire town is, you know, so why should we be pigeonholed into, you know, further adding more money to it? When to your point.
And also, I think part of the reason, the letter, what the letter does is there was, there were some considerations previously with other projects that have come before that involve land that the school uses, that's also used by the town, is, is everyone on the same page that this should be happening? So just the very fact of the letter is at least saying, yes. We, we know that this application has been submitted, and we agree with it being submitted, because there have been some actual issues around making sure that communication had happened in the past, as they were ironing out the details of these processes, and it wasn't anyone's fault. It's just part of the learning curve.
Right, yeah. One of the other questions that they actually asked is, would this be part of a bigger project? As in, you know, if we decided to do a turf field or something like that, but even if we did decide to do that, this is separate. So it's not like, you know, the work would be undone, they'd be taken apart or anything like that, so. Yep, it was. It was a good question. I had to ask Michelle, so, but yeah.
So to refocus the conversation ever so slightly, the motion that's been made on the floor and seconded was purely addressing the letter of support written by Dr. Girardi and you, Mary, on behalf of the school committee. So I would like to act on that, and if there's any further discussion about the second element, that, that condition that CPC is putting on it, I'd like to continue that after we, we move on this motion. So at this time, I'd like to call a vote. All in favor of supporting a letter from the school committee in favor of the bleacher project? All in favor? Motion passes 5-0. At this point in time, if you'd like to continue the conversation about the condition that CPC is asking for?
Well, I just think that Mary and I just pointed out two very good points. Mary's point is, she's already identified that our schools are actually community-used properties, and that the properties are well-used by the community, so it really benefits the whole community. And number two, I, through the research that we did with the other communities, they see this as a capital project, so we're recommending that CPC, anybody that CPC does not fund, be augmented by capital planning. And I don't think that that's unreasonable. So I think we have some good points to make as far as answering that question between the two of us, and I think the letter of support just says we definitely support this project. We believe in it.
Perfect. Oh, good. Thank you.
Thank you for pulling that forward.
Draft calendar, 2019, 2020.
So traditionally, the Maynard School Committee votes on a final draft of the calendar in March, the March-April timeframe. And as one of my evaluation goals, the district would like a list of events and special meetings in advance of the upcoming year, including like updates on parent conferences and a lot of special events. We'd like to have it organized well in advance, and that, and so even though we usually do the, the calendar in the March-April timeframe, I thought it was important to get this to you tonight. And by contract, actually, we survey the staff regarding their preference regarding. And by contract, actually, we survey the staff regarding their preference regarding starting before or after Labor Day. Again, this year, their preference is to start before Labor Day. So, this year, Colleen and Jennifer worked on the initial draft that I shared with you, but I would like you to just look at it for tonight, consider it, and not vote on it tonight. I'd like us to bring it back at the next meeting. That way, just in case you see something that you're concerned with, you can bring it up to the next meeting, or actually, if you could share it with Colleen, that would be great, but I would love for it to be approved at the next meeting, so that the principals of the agency can operate, and I can then work on those lists of events, because I think we're excited to do that, and that's why we're doing the calendar earlier than ever. And to be honest with you, that this calendar is very similar to this year's calendar, and our calendars have been very similar for quite a few years. So, there isn't a lot of changes. Sometimes, we miss something, and so hopefully, after your review, you'll catch that, and by the next meeting, we can have a calendar approved earlier than normal, and we can start working on those lists of events. So, there's no approval, it's just for your review, starting tonight. That's why we didn't share it with the community, because it's, it's just a draft, it's not, it's not the actual calendar. So, that's the point I'm making, it's just a draft, but I wanted to share it with you, and we want to get it done early.
So, I just had a question. Do we run this by the teachers?
Yeah, I, we always do a survey of, to the teachers. That's by contract, we have to do that.
Okay, that's fine. I, I can't remember what the specific issue was, but I remember.
And we even asked them some additional questions about preferences for early release days and those sort of things. And so, we adhere to the feedback we got from the teachers.
Excellent, all right, terrific, thank you.
Okay, so, sounds like then, based on Dr. Girardi's update, that we have about two weeks or so to consider this. Any feedback goes to Colleen for suggestion, revision, and then we'll act on it on the 24th. Thanks for the update.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Was it this year or last year that we moved a day off, or?
An early release, no, PD day.
Right.
I think it was, Colleen, do you recall last year was the first time? Originally, for a while, when I got here, we used to have them spaced out during the school year. Then, we tried to have them all front-loaded at the beginning of the year. The, and by the way, this work isn't done in isolation. We actually have a professional development committee who had input on this as well. And so, last year, I believe, Colleen, my correctors, two years, that we moved to not having the three days upfront. It was last year that was the first time we did, moved to not having the three days upfront.
Okay, but what I'm talking about is that at one of the meetings, I remember, maybe it was in June or something, that you moved a day?
Yeah. It was, it was for this calendar year.
Oh, yeah.
Right, okay, so I guess, my, my only question is, why, I don't remember why it was moved, but whether or not we're going to have, run into the same issue.
We misunderstood the prompt date.
Oh, okay.
So, that's why, so that's another reason why this isn't finalized, because
We're still waiting on the prompt.
We've asked to make sure that we don't have to do that next time, and we're waiting, that's one of the things we're waiting for. We may have to shift one of these PD days at, during prompt time.
Okay.
So, that's a good point, though, something to worry about. That's very important.
The other thing that I would just bring up, and I, I brought it up before, and it goes on deaf ears, and maybe it will again, but the Beacon Santa Telethon, like, have we ever thought about giving, having that Monday after the telethon being a professional development day since?
It's a good idea.
Well, I've brought it up before, and like I say, it went on deaf ears, but not here. This is past tense.
That's past tense.
But, yeah, but it, just because I, I think there's, there's just kids that are either exhausted or sick, not coming to school, just, I just throw it out there, that would be.
And our, our wonderful teachers and principals do accommodate those kids when they're tired that next morning, but it would make sense.
So, we have one scheduled for the Friday before, assuming the telethons are seven.
He's all for that.
That's logical. We love logical.
So, maybe we just move it from the sixth to the ninth.
On this calendar, would it be December ninth, Mary?
It would be December ninth, I think, if that's when the Beacon.
So, Dawn, looking at that, that would be an early release day on the sixth?
Oh, I see.
Not a, not a full-off day.
Not an actual, yeah.
Gotcha. And those are conferences, Colleen just said.
And just throwing it out there, because I know Jennifer also.
Yeah, that's just Green Meadow conferences.
Okay, so, anyway, you know.
How Jennifer read that.
And have it, have Jennifer take a look at it, but.
Have them consider that.
Just, yeah.
The sixth is all schools, really good for you.
So, just for some feedback from the PD committee, Dr. Girardi, I'm looking at the 17th of January, which is a Friday, as a PD day, that wraps into the 20th of January, which is MLK Day. And I know that in previous years, we have gotten some feedback from the community about both the pros and the cons of students having a four-day weekend. So, it's, it's a, it's a topic of conversation. I wonder if the, if the PD committee or the teachers would like to weigh in on the possibility of moving that 17th of January PD day to maybe the 8th of December, which would not create, would, it wouldn't create the need for an additional PD day, it would be a one-for-one substitution.
Right.
So, the 17th to the 9th of December.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's something I'll get.
The ninth.
Yeah, it would be the 9th of December, yes, sorry.
Hmm, okay.
According to the draft, it's just listed as a PD day, no school on January 17th.
Oh, no, the 8th.
Uh, the 8th.
It's a Sunday, the 9th.
Then, it's, it's the, so, to follow through your question, and it's thoughtful, and we're trying not to take comments on our discussion items right now. No, 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 no. We're easing into this. That Friday, the 6th, is an early release, I believe, because it is a conference day.
Right. So, you're saying Monday, the 9th?
So, we're talking about Monday, the 9th, which would be the Monday following telethon.
Monday, the 9th of December versus the 17th of January.
Thank you, Mary, for clarifying that.
Yep.
Okay, I will share that with the PD committee, and.
By all means, please ask the teacher opinions.
And, yeah.
It may, it may work, it may not work, but that's what we're looking at.
Right, exactly, just throwing it out there, yeah.
Awesome.
Cool.
All right, excellent.
We'll, we'll act on this in two weeks. All right, so, Dr. Girardi, give us a, a quick update on your goals for the year, please.
So, we provide copies for the audience as well, and you'll notice that we took the goals and the, the goals document that we created, the school committee mutually created with me, and in blue text are the items that we, that have already been accomplished, and it's clearly not just me. A lot of my goals reflect the work of the people I work with in central offices, and the principals of LNO, and staff, you know? So, you can see the blue text are some of the goals, key actions, and benchmarks that have been achieved already. And it's a living document. I mean, even today, one of the first items under professional practice goals, you'll see is the first meeting of the custodial negotiations, and that was one of the first things that we, that was added today. So, I've tried to update it as much as possible. If you have any questions about any of the activities, I'd be happy to talk about them as much as possible. The other big items that you'll see, you know, there's the professional practice goal, which is around the responsibilities of budget negotiation mostly, and you can see some of the things we've done there. Then, under effective communication, did I miss, I'm sorry, student learning goal, we've got some things that we've begun under there. And then, under district, ensuring effective communications, you can see there's quite a list of things that we've done this year to improve communications, and there's still quite a bit more to do. But, at least some of these things are completed, some of the upgrades to the website, some of the ways we communicate, the principals of LNO and I communicate now is a lot different than it was in the past year. And so, you can see a lot of, a lot of what we've been able to do so far in a pretty short time. So, I, I can go into.
I think it's great, well, just if you want me to, I think it's great to see so many things that are in development, and I think it shows how really, you know, the folks underneath you are understanding the goals. I think they're aligned across the system now, which is really great. It's just sort of, just amazing how much is kind of, sort of what Mary was saying earlier, how much is happening at once. So, I think it's a really good indication, to me at least, that sort of the, the system that we've put in place and just really having folks understand what they are responsible for. Like, I think it's very clear from this, to even seeing them listed as Dr. Girardi's goals, that it's happening, it's in process. So, for me, I think this is a huge step forward, just compared to prior years. So, thank you for taking the time to put this together.
Yeah, under professional practice goal, another update, is we're opening with the Paris later in the month also. And what was really interesting today is we, we opened a conversation with a custodial team, and, you know, in the first meeting, it's usually establishing ground rules, setting dates, having a conversation about norms and expectations. And Dr. Girardi came in with a proposed list of guidelines and norms, and they were accepted, you know, pretty quickly, verbatim, by the association, because they were thoughtful and they were, they were just well-prepared. So, I mean, it just, again, having the opportunity in the moment to sort of like reflect on what we're asking of Bob, and making sure that, you know, he's living up to the high expectations that we have for him, that we've set for him. It was, it was just really nuts, because that hasn't often been my, my experience as far as the negotiating process.
Right.
Just moving quickly and proficiently, you know, through some things, which sometimes take a lot longer than you expect. So, I'm really looking forward to later in the year, when we get a chance to revisit this, Dr. Girardi. And, yeah, there's a lot going on. A lot of really positive things are happening in, in our schools and, and our administrative offices. Other questions or comments?
I just had, sorry, sorry, you go.
No, you go.
No, sorry. Sure?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. The, I, so I, I just, I had a question. I forget where I saw it, but the plans of, I know we did a great job with the high school of showcasing for the lower grades, you know, having a night for, and that's, I forget which, is that under the communication goal? I forget which one, I'm just wondering.
I don't know if we wrote it in, only because it happened, so now it's a content, it's more like.
Yeah, I sort of thought I saw something that kind of.
Yeah, no, I think, I think it's connected to what I talked about earlier, is creating that event list in advance now.
Okay.
It's, it is somewhere under communication.
I thought it was under here, and I can't find it now, but I, I was just asking, we do have a plan for the spring now, for the other schools and that, not just one and done?
Nope.
Right here, this promo program.
Yes, here we go, yeah.
Schedule updates.
Exactly. So, it is under the, under the communication, right?
And the foreseeable benchmarks on the last page.
There it was, yeah.
Oh, there it is, yep.
So, I would love to see, not right now, but I'd love to see that plan maybe the next meeting, if we could just have it spelled out for us, so that we know what, what's going on.
And that goes into the calendar, right? That's what we were talking about before?
Right.
So, yeah, so what I was hoping, and what I, was that, once we have a calendar, then the principals of LNO cannot put all that together for you.
Perfect.
So, it wouldn't be for the next meeting, because, but once we have that calendar to work off of, then, like, I know Dan already knows when the next spelling bee is going to be already, you know? Like, we, those are the kind of things that we can now put in a list of events for families, so we'll have that a year in advance, where in the past, it would go up on the calendar as people planned it, but sometimes, things would be, and of course, we're not going to be rigid. If, if something great comes up, we'll, we'll add it to it, you know, during the course of the year. But, it would be nice to have these events all listed out for parents. So, I do need the calendar and then work with the LNOs to bring that back to you.
Excellent, all right. But, I also would like to see it for this spring, too. Like, what are we doing for the rest of the year? So, I love that, that we're going to have a plan a year out, but I really want to see what we're doing. I don't want to waste any time, so, that'd be great. Thank you.
Awesome. Marla, you had something?
Go ahead, go for it.
Um, I was wondering what this, the MHS Global Curriculum Meeting was.
Which one is that under now?
Um, that's under.
Oh, I see it now.
The professional practice goals, nope, sorry.
Student learning.
Student learning goals, under the key actions. And I was just wondering what the, what.
Because that's two, it's a larger outline, which is, it's nice to see.
Hold on, oh, go ahead. No, go ahead. I'm working on it, so if you talk.
It's under the key actions?
And then I might say something to you.
Uh, let me just look it up. I'm trying to remember now.
It's under the bullet that says regular communication of K through 12 program developments and highlights.
And what's the date again?
Uh, 11/29/2018. It's this one right here.
And also 10/24.
Oh, thank you, there's two of them.
Yep.
Oh, that was, that's a very exciting one. Thanks for reminding me about that. So, that's an initiative that I've talked about at school committee meetings for years and haven't gotten off the ground. But, that is, we finally, it, the hard part about finding either grants or programs is you have to find the right person who wants to work on that. And so, I've talked about creating this global initiative where we have a teacher in Maynard who is co-teaching with a teacher in another country, and our students and their students are working on projects together virtually, because it replicates the world of work. The future world of work, a lot of our friends who are engineers, or work in the sciences, they do work on projects online with somebody from another country. And so, what was great this year was, we found a teacher at the high school who was excited about this, and her advanced anatomy and physiology class was the perfect class for us to do this. So, we are, we brought in the global STEM network to meet with her, to see if she was interested, and they explained that the process is, much like we talked about co-teaching in special education, is that they will link her up with a teacher in, in, in this case, in France. She happens to be French and speaks French as well, by the way, the teacher, and has relatives there, so she said, I might know some schools as well. And so, they were more than happy to work with her on that. But, the point being that they, they try to match up the teachers first, to make sure that, like, we talked about co-teaching being a marriage, that these two teachers are going to feel that way, that they're going to work that way. We make sure they have the technology in the room, so that they have split screens, that their students can see us, and our students can see them, and that they can do joint projects together on the split screens. We're putting all this together, and that's happening in our anatomy and physiology class this year. In addition to that, we actually found two teachers are interested, so this year, it will be that teacher, and that she'll continue on in the following year, but next year, over the summer, we're going to have another teacher who has expressed interest as well in the sciences at Maynard High School. So, it's, it's really exciting, because it's a combination of best instructional practices, co-teaching, which we've talked about, but also the fact that they're focusing on the world of work in the future for our kids, and giving them that opportunity is pretty amazing. So, those are the two initial meetings I've been at. I know that they've met more, but I was there to kind of get things off the ground, make the connections with the right people, and I am just tickled pink that that program is coming off the ground for Maynard High School students. Thanks for pointing it out.
Yeah, thank you. And then, I was just, I was poking through the website today, and wanted to just take a look at the curriculum page, and I noticed at the bottom that it says that there are program offerings, but I only saw computer science on there.
Correct.
So, I'm assuming that more things will be added as we get that information.
Absolutely. So, what's not really reflected in here is, even today, I had the very same conversation with our technology director, with our curriculum director, where are we at? In fact, I didn't log it in here, but there was, what you may not have noticed was, if you had looked at that particular page a couple of days ago, the way the company had put it together, it didn't have, it didn't pop. Believe it or not, that page now pops. And so, simple things like the colors of the lines, they had used, the links were like a dull gray, and people wouldn't have noticed that those are good links. Now, they're, now everything's a black and orange to match Maynard colors. The programs that are going to be added, and I think Dawn may have talked about it during our developmental phase, all of the new programs that we've brought in today, those will go under there. There'll be a nice picture, just like computer science, but you know, our computer science teachers, they're always leaders, and they were the first ones to get us the information in, but we're working together to make that happen.
Okay.
But, there's a lot of collaborative meetings that don't actually show up on this document, between myself, the technology director, and the director, the superintendent in charge of curriculum and instruction.
Okay.
Sorry, Dawn, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no, I was, nothing.
But on that page, I'm particularly proud also, because you'll notice it says completed. There was some concerns that parents didn't know what children should be expected to know and be able to do at every grade level. If you'll notice on the left-hand side, there's links to all, some really nicely done documents by the Mass Department of Ed at every grade level of what students should know and be able to do in ELA, math, and science and technology. So, if you get a chance to go to those links, those are awesome. There's also the MCAS results for Massachusetts, there's a link there. Those are the kind of refinements, and I've been meeting regularly with our technology director, and we've been looking at different pages, saying, because some of this was just rolled over from the old website, which wasn't very good, and I'm saying, how can we do this better? And especially for him, he and I are actually working on an article. I call myself the analog native, and he's the digital native. So, I, I say to him, how does this look better? You know, tell me how a website should look, because I'm an analog native. I don't know how to make this intuitive. But, I do know, we have a lot of information here, and we can even do better at making it intuitive for, so those are the kind of meetings I didn't even log, put in here, that I had with him today. And we identified another page, not that page, but a different page where we need to work on a few things. The last time I met with him, which is logged in here, we identified that page, and we made some of those improvements.
Okay, great.
Yeah, it's exciting. To me, the website is exciting, because I'm learning how to use the app, how to use the website, because I. because I, I'm of a different generation. He keeps laughing at me. And so it does, it feels good to be able to communicate to people in a way that a lot of people now feel is a better way to communicate.
I'm all set.
Awesome.
Thanks.
Going once, going twice? All right, what do you got?
Well, two things. One, um, it's good to see all the activity that's happening, but just as kind of a case in point with Mauro asking what the meeting was about, if they can be tied to the particular, you know, the benchmarks that you foresee. So maybe if they're tied to some of the initiatives, so that we just understand what those meetings might relate to.
Sure.
Um, I think that would be helpful to see it from that, that perspective as opposed to, it's nice to see that there, these things are happening and that is definitely one of the metrics, but...
More detail.
Yeah, yeah, if they, if they're even, I'm trying to, I'm trying to give a way you can do it concisely and easily. But if even under the, if you have some pet names for some of the projects or something that we can then relate back so we can see progress being made in particular, maybe it's a table where you see the particular, um, project and then you see the number of meetings that are happening with it and a summary of, a quick summary of like introductions made and move forward with whatever. So that you, I think that'll give us a, a, a nice snapshot and help people to understand how much is going on that you understand behind the, the meetings. But I think that doing that in a concise way so it's not taking you 10 million years to do it.
Yeah. A good example was I had to look at my calendar to remember that meeting.
Right.
Rather, the other, that didn't, wasn't clear to you, it wasn't even clear to me because I've got so many things I'm working on. I had to look at my calendar to remember what the meeting was about.
Yeah, yeah, and, and that's understandable. So I don't know if there was a way to do that, so you have like, almost like a log you can keep.
Either that or I might just add a little bit more detail to each one of those, that there's a connection somehow.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and then the only other thing that, um, I would bring up, just understanding, um, I guess there's two things. I'd also, there's the user-friendly app and website meeting with Aptige, which I, this just sounds intriguing. And then the other thing is Green Meadow, I, every, all the principals have been providing email. But two of the buildings, I noticed that the Green Meadow building, it's not happening on a regu, it's not at a, on the other building, this seems to be on a, a, a particular day, so you know that you're going to get the email about...
Yeah, Fowler's on Monday.
Yeah. So then you kind of, you know that you're getting that email, and then there's always supplemental that they're needed, but that seems like a nice best practice to follow.
Sure.
Um, in general.
You can work on that.
That would be useful if it's possible to do that, I would think.
Absolutely. I'm certain it is.
Yeah. And then the last thing was Aptige, but you don't need to get into that. I just want to say that that's compelling and interesting to...
So I think in, in that case, I'd like to model the best practice that we recommend of members of the community, and that's if we have follow-up questions, schedule some time with Bob and pop in. Um, I know that I had the advantage of showing up for a meeting today. Stephen was in the room, they were talking about Aptige. So I had an opportunity to just eavesdrop on the conversation a little bit, but...
And I can't even possibly document everything we, like, you just made a point that that's something that's really wonderful, that's come out of the BD Committee and the work that Stephen and Jennifer are doing on credentialing, having, helping teachers get credentials around some of their technological skills and their instructional skills. And it's going to be able for them to highlight, like, if they get certified in Google Classroom or if they get certified in, um, how to use Aptige, or Thrill Share, which is the tool that you use with Aptige. And so teachers will do a list of things for professional development and then they'll get a badge. These are the kind of exciting things we're working with the union and, and, of teachers to, to identify all the good work they're doing. That didn't even make it in here, but thanks for reminding me. Because that's work that we do. It's, it's what we do.
Right, right. Thank you.
All right. Uh, citizens' comments?
Hello.
Good evening.
I don't know if I'm following the proper procedure or not, so I apologize if I'm not. But, um, just an observation, the, um, Green Meadow field, it doesn't really drain.
Okay.
It seems like, uh, two days in a row now, we've been on the hard top because it's been a big lump of puddle out there.
So the field, you're saying the field that we poured a lot of money into is not draining?
The one next to the playground.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
And I, I took some pictures. You can't really see that great, but even last year, behind the playground structure itself, it was like a lake. So yesterday and today, the playground structure area itself had big puddles, especially where the kids would come off the slides or come down the pole, so we really can't use it. So we have a 30-minute recess with 120 kids on a very confined area. So it's just something to observe and to think about. I, I don't know what the expectation was from the company or, or to fix it or what it was supposed to look like. I know grass-wise, you're never going to get a lush lawn because we don't have an irrigation system and that gets, the sun beats down on that all day long. So I understand the grass is never going to help.
So I'm going to give you a follow-up piece of homework, please. Get those pictures to Dr. Girardi and the building-level leadership so they, so then that, they can kick it up the line to Tim and to Aaron because they'll be our, our conduit to the contractors. Um, and that way we can, we can start that conversation. Because maybe there's something that, um, we as an organization could be doing better differently, or maybe there's something that the contractor needs to come in and clear out or fix.
Right, because I don't know if there's a, um, what's that called?
Like a warranty, oh, I was going to say a warranty even. Yeah, right.
Yeah, so, um, my, my recommendation would be send those pictures along so that they can get it to Tim and Aaron and we can get acting on that.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Anne.
Frankly, that sucks.
I know.
It's a concern.
I know, the money, yeah.
Yep. Other questions or comments? All right, members' comments and questions?
A couple, if it's...
Go ahead, Mary.
Um, so I talked to Mauro and I talked to Dr. Girardi briefly about this too, but, um, I know in one of the goals was, is to kind of create like a, maybe a parent guide for students that, um, parents think need to be on IP and just, you know, so... Exactly, just how parents, because I ran into somebody earlier this week that is quite frustrated, um, because they don't know what they don't know. And, um, so just to have a, you know, this is your first step, your second step, exactly, the timetables and that. And I know it's on the goals and I know it's, it's being worked on, but just that sense of urgency to, um, to really put that in place would, would help a lot of people, so. Um, and then I wanted to ask, um, Bob, the, um, where are we with the Education Alliance at the high school, that whole, that...
Oh, the, um, college and career readiness?
Yeah, exactly, um, because it, it seemed like it was such a great...
Yeah, it's still in process.
Okay.
What they're doing now is gathering data, um, and so that's why there's not a lot up there yet. But they're gathering the data, working with the guidance counselors, um, to identify, uh, what our needs are and they're starting to develop that. They, so it's in process, it just hasn't...
So we've hired them?
Yes.
We're definitely moving forward with them?
We are.
Okay, that's, I wasn't quite sure of that.
It's a major piece of the Sturton Learning Goals, so...
Okay, good.
Hopefully you're going to get to see data, you're going to get to see the results of surveys.
Excellent.
They're also, uh, recently, uh, working on a student survey. Uh, I just saw the email this week, in fact, I think it was yesterday, I saw an email from them asking us how to get the students' MPS emails so that we, they could send them a survey. So those, that's the kind of data that you'll be getting, it's just in process.
So they're in the info gathering stage, basically, which is, yeah.
Are we also reaching out to alumni and trying to get their, some feedback from them? Once they're out in the real world?
Right.
It seems like that would be helpful to, you know, find out what their challenges have been or their successes and, and that.
What worked.
I know...
Right, exactly.
Yeah, we recently had the, um...
Right, it was that time when they, they all came home.
Return Day?
Yeah, the return day.
Yep.
Right, which is the day before vacation, so I don't, I, I believe that they were, there was some reach out there.
Okay.
But we can look into it.
Yeah, that would be really, really great.
The return day was a huge success, by the way, this year. We had more than ever.
Was it a, yeah?
That's my understanding anyway. I think we had 40 people, 40...
Wow. And, and was there a, um, an assembly or did the, the students, they...
Yes, so there was an assembly, most of the seniors and juniors presented the posters. I personally had, uh, helped, uh, set it up, so there was a lot of presentations and that.
Excellent, fantastic. And I just, in reference to Kate Hogan coming to our next meeting on the 24th, we talked briefly, so the, the question is, what do we want to do with that meeting? Because we were talking about doing the same video. Is, is everybody good with that? Although Bob had said that there's more of a, um, a, a shorter version.
I believe that, um, actually we were highlighting along with North Andover as being one of the first districts to do that presentation with a senator, uh, which was great that we were in the lead once again. Um, and they also sent out a slightly shorter version, I'm not sure how much shorter it is, of that video. But I did feel the video was powerful.
Yeah, me too.
And I thought Michelle's presentation, because it links directly to our needs, was powerful. So I really think we should just replicate that and hopefully I can get a slightly shorter video.
And knowing just what I've learned, um, from participating with my own local, it seems like a lot of the foot dragging when it comes to the funding is coming from the House level and not from the Senate level.
Interesting.
So I think taking the opportunity to show the full video and putting a little bit of extra time in it might, might do us good in the long run. Because it seems like the Senate, and I mean, I really appreciated Senator Eldridge's time and his thoughtfulness and his follow-up and his social media posts afterwards, like, it's clear that we got through to him, but, um, it's becoming a little bit more clear to me that the House is the problem and that's what Kate represents for us. So I think the full-court press might be the best play on this.
Yep, absolutely. And I, I was there too, but I didn't know if everybody else was there because I thought that, that video, you know, told it all. So, and then Michelle's presentation again.
I know we're coming off a couple of three, three-and-a-half-hour meetings with executive sessions and stuff, but, um, I'm personally all in favor of putting in the time because it's something that I feel so strongly about.
Definitely.
Absolutely.
I need to see what, what they cut.
Hmm, yeah, good point.
Because I do think that it was very powerful.
I'll see if I can find that and send it out and then we can decide whether we want the long play or the...
Yeah, I think you and Justin can probably just have that discussion. I'm sure you guys will...
Works for me.
Um, and then just two other quick things. Um, so I had seen Michelle this afternoon and she's having some frustration with, um, different groups that, um, have, think that they have different rules about paying for the fields and use of the fields and that, so, um, and I think Colleen, you guys, you've talked about this too, about really creating a policy about, um, I mean, there's been, she's been trying to work with different groups, but it seems as though one or two of them are kind of, yeah. So I think if we put something specific in writing, it'll make, you know, it'll help her, it'll help Michelle.
Let Michelle know that we're eagerly awaiting a policy to sign off on?
Yeah, 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 so, okay. Um, and then the last thing was, I'm hearing amazing things about the seniors and the schools that they're, the universities and colleges that they're being accepted to. I'm just hearing...
Oh, my goodness.
Really, really, really good things, so the sooner that we can put that shout out.
The wall at the high school, yeah. I know every year they, they have the wall, but it's not going up yet? Okay.
That doesn't happen until the end of the year.
And it's still early. I mean, they're still playing, that's why it's too early to start shouting them out because there's so many more to come, but...
Yeah, I mean, there's some schools that have like a January 15 application deadline and, you know, you don't get action until April, so.
Yeah.
But I, AJ, homework assignment. If you and your circle of friends start getting early acceptances or your friends start accepting offers, would you ask for permission to just report back as part of you and Pat's periodic updates to us and maybe just tease us a little bit with, "I have a friend who just accepted at this place," or...
It doesn't even need to be the name.
I don't even need a name, just tell me the schools.
And it's not even the school that they're going to, it's the schools that they have been accepted to. Because sometimes it's financial, sometimes it's distance and that. Um, so it's, I've always been a proponent of all of the schools that they have been accepted to because that's the amazing thing to me.
Well, and I can, um, share with you a little bit that we can be proud of. Principal Carrigan has been writing some of these details in his newsletter, but again, if you don't have a student at the high school, you might not get that newsletter. Uh, one of our students, uh, received early action to Harvard.
That's what I heard.
And is definitely going to Harvard. Uh, that's his first choice. Uh, another student has had, um, all three of her choices for art schools accepted. And so she has a choice. She hasn't made the choice yet, but all very good art colleges. So it's not, it's across the board. Our students are successful in the arts. And the, uh, the, the student going to Harvard, I believe, is for engineering, for bioengineering. So it's, it is exciting to hear that data or hear the, you know, hear those wonderful stories. So, and I, I had the chance from reading Chuck's notes to, to hear that.
Yeah, well, let's start gathering the info and let's start talking about it.
Yeah, it's good stuff.
Because it's certainly worth celebration.
Absolutely.
Mary, you got anything else?
That's it, no, thank you.
Dawn, down on your end?
Uh, just a couple of quick things, um, sort of what's going on in progress. Uh, so Mary and I have our next meeting with the, um, Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, January 16th. Uh, so we call that the Tribe Board Budget Meeting, um, so that's our next installment of that. Um, Justin, as you've mentioned, we're starting negotiations with custodians and the para-professionals. The other thing we have going on is starting to get ready, uh, Mary and I, for the February 9th budget presentation. So I just want to make sure that all school committee members have February 9th on their calendar.
I do have an update for that one.
I think we've mentioned it a few times, but...
I've got some clarifying information and some updates on that also.
And my last thing, uh, just so we don't, um, trip over each other in our work, um, I emailed Senator Eldridge tonight to try to get some clarification. I know they recently filed a bill that might help address the foundation budget. Um, but it's early, uh, but what I, and Mary and I were talking about this, even as it stands now, is it a bill that we would support? Right? Because if it's a bill that helps only urban districts or, um, only rural districts, you know, where are we? So I've, I've asked Senator Eldridge to provide some clarification, even though we know it's still a moving target and it could change a lot along the way. Um, because it's hard to even note if you can be excited, because when you read through it, there's so much legal terminology. I don't know if it's good for Maynard or just a net nothing for Maynard, so, so I'll report back on that.
Cool, thank you. You good, Dawn?
I am all set, sorry.
Mauro, what do you got?
Uh, let's see. So my, my oldest son, who's in, a freshman, uh, was telling me this evening that, um, that some of the sophomores went on a field trip to a prison yesterday. And they were able to talk to five inmates, uh, one of which was only 16.
Oh, my goodness.
And of the four of them, um, they were all in there from, for some sort of drug-related issue. Um, and that the majority of them were straight A students when they were in school.
Wow.
Yeah. So that was, him just hearing about it made a big impression. I can't even imagine actually going.
And I did that when I was a teacher. I actually, uh, with mother, we had an organization when I was a teacher, a mothers, a drunk-driving organization, and we would bring students, uh, who were referred to go on a trip like that. Um, and it is, I actually have seen that trip and it is powerful.
Yeah.
So I'm glad to hear that.
And it just so happened that Ms. Doc Duff was the one that went with the students, so I thought that was pretty cool.
Well, yeah, nice coincidence for tonight, right?
Yes, yeah. The other thing that I wanted to bring up and possibly discuss at some later date is homework. And mainly, my biggest issue isn't the, necessarily the amount of homework that kids are getting or doing. It is the fact that kids are getting homework on Thanksgiving weekend, over Christmas break, over, you know, what I think should be family time.
Yep.
And I don't feel like kids should be getting homework when that is family time.
So a lot of districts have addressed this in the past and I think that's something, I've, I've always believed that we should address that, um, even for my own students, my own children in their school system. I think it's something important to address. So that's something that we can, um, we'll have to put together a group to look at that and I think make recommendations.
As if and when we get a group together, Lexington, my district, has instituted a homework policy with very hard guidelines, homework-free religious and other holidays. And it's a, it's a constantly updated and living document. We're, we're near two of implementation and it's been revised about half a dozen times already. Uh, but it's a really, if, if that's a direction that we ultimately want to go in, it's a publicly available resource and I think it's a really good start in pointing the conversation. Because I shared many of the same sentiments that you shared.
Well, especially when you think about, um, the, like, the vacations and that, oftentimes the families go away and then the kids have the stress that they have to either, you know, do it when they get home or do it while they're on vacation. Yeah, I'd be all about that too.
Right.
Brilliant.
Do you, do you feel like that has helped? Or is the, what is the...
So anecdotal feedback that I've gathered, gathered from students that I work with, they indicate that they like looking forward to times when they know that homework is not going to be assigned.
Right.
Professionally, I know that there are colleagues on my campus that have thoughtfully identified ways to assign work that must be done anyway because of...